Council Bluffs Savings Bank. Our goal is to help you, your families, and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluffs people operating at Council Bluffs Bank to help Council Bluffs be a better place to work and live. Council Bluffs Savings Bank. Hometown banking, the way it used to be. Member FDIC.
(inaudible) Call to be in order. Let's record show all members of council are present. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This evening, we have a number of public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. If you need to speak to the council, please step to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of Resolution 13-203. This is continued from 8/26/2013, vacating and disposing of that part of 42nd Avenue lying east of the east right-of-way line of Indian Creek, except the east, or the west, 244.5 feet, lying east of the east right-of-way line of Indian Creek, and west of the west property line commonly known as 11342nd Avenue. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against?
As I'm sure you know by now, I am president of Pelican Cove Homeowners Association. I'm sure by now as well that the mayor and members of the city council know all of the reasons that we're opposed to the proposed Northlake development. I'm not going to repeat these reasons at this time. I am however, going to express our dismay at the comments made by Councilman Watson after approval of the proposed Northlake development at the last city council meeting. There was a time in the political process when people could have different opinions about what was good for the community. People could honestly disagree or agree about what was necessary to improve the city. Mr. Watson's comments, and I assume that he was not speaking for the mayor and the city council, were insulting at best. When Councilman Watson made the comment that it would be un-American to oppose this type of housing and lack of green space proposed at the Northlake development, it shows contempt for your constituents. This is the context of Mr. Watson's remarks, as shown in the public record on CB17 TV. I watched this several times. The other disparaging remarks Councilman Watson had made about me and my neighbors at Lake Manawha regarding our financial success and our concerns relating to this project have no place in the merits of debating a zoning change. The ability to tear down and deride people who disagree with you may now be a requirement to serve in national politics, but I cannot believe that they are needed in Council Bluffs, Iowa for debating a zoning change. We're concerned that you felt the need to belittle your constituents in the last city council meeting, and I would remind you, Mr. Watson, you serve us. We do not serve you. So honest people may disagree about the density and green space desired for the proposed Northlake development. We have a strong community in Council Bluffs built on community involvement and representative government. No one believes that everyone will always have the same opinion on all matters. I'm assuming this project will be approved, and you will forward it going forward tonight. I know that you let me have my opinion be heard by you, and in the end, you have a different opinion, and I have respect for that. However, Councilman Watson, you went beyond just stating your opinion and supporting this project. Your condescending attitude towards your constituents was not appropriate, and I therefore request that Mr. Watson make a public apology relating to his disparaging remarks at the last city council meeting. Thank you.
You? Anyone else speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Deborah Peterson, 215 South Main Street, Council Bluffs, Iowa, Attorney for the developer and the owner. The only issue here on the vacation is the location of the easements and the utilities that are currently located there, and I'm hopeful that the explanation that Randy Fail provided you, our engineer today, explains to you that the existing Cox, Mid-American, and Century Link will probably remain right where they're at in the north 15 feet of the right-of-way. As far as the water, sewer, and gas, that will all be redone anyway, so it really shouldn't have any impact. So we would like you to encourage you to go ahead and vote in favor of this vacation, reserving of course, the easements to the utilities as they need. The owner, the developer, and Mr. Fail, the engineer, are here if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? That ends the public hearing. It was the council's pleasure.
Motion to vacate right-of-way while retaining the easements for utilities.
Second.
Is there discussion?
I did want...
Dick? That... Okay. I'm sorry.
That's fine. I did want to briefly thank Mr. Northwall for coming and expressing his opinions on behalf of his gated community, the Homeowners Association of Pelican Cove. I've answered each and every email that I've received from your members. I do want to say that if you look back at my comments and context, I did say un-American, but I was speaking to the subtle subtext of some of the comments that one gentleman expressly said, "The lookie-loos, the people of this community who might not necessarily be able to afford to live in your gated community, but who under the state constitution have an absolute right to see the lake." Those public areas are owned by all 64,000 people in this community, not just those fortunate enough to be able to afford to own a house in a gated community on it. I have nothing against people in that area who are able to have that in their life. But my comment dealt with people who thought they could keep the rest of us out of those areas, as if I had the responsibility or power. And that to me, to tell regular Americans, regular residents of Council Bluffs, "The lookie-loos," to use the language, that they cannot go to the lake, which they have an absolute right to be at, is, in my view, un-American, because we're all supposed to be equal when it comes to public facilities, not just those who can afford to own a house next to it. So I just want to make that point clear. I appreciate it's an emotional issue for those. You know, if I could afford a house in that development, and it was vacant for that many years next to me, and there was any proposal to build anything other than houses just as expensive as mine or greater, I personally have concerns too. I can see how that's a natural human emotion, but our job when we sit up here is to do what's in the best interest of the community, not one piece of it versus the rest. And so I'm sorry we disagree, but I do take issue with you taking my comments out of context. But I do thank you. Your neighborhood gave a lot of comments throughout the process. I believe I addressed each and every one of them, regardless of whether we might agree or not, and I encourage you to continue to stay involved.
Any discussion by the council? We have a motion, floor, and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of Resolution 13-213, determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and a rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such areas necessary in interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such an area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting Amendment 1 to the Marketplace Urban Renewal Plan. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor? That ends the public hearing. It was the council's pleasure.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of Resolution 13-214, approving and authorizing the execution of a development agreement by and between the City of Council Bluffs and Legacy Council Bluffs Marketplace LLC. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor? That ends the public hearing. It was the council's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. We have motion approved and a second.
I want to point out that that motion to include the language that was presented to the council this afternoon...
Yes, sir.
Which is what I...
Yes.
Second concurs.
Okay. So we have a motion on floor and a second, as amended by the council. Is there discussion by the council?
I will be abstaining.
All... Excuse me. Roll call.
Branigan?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Walsh?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of Resolution 13-215, determining an area of the city to be a blighted area and that rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such areas necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting the 2013 amendment to the Bluffs Center 1 Urban Renewal Plan. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor? That ends the public hearing. It was the council's pleasure.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of Resolution 13-216, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute of a development agreement by and between the City of Council Bluffs, 125 West Broadway LLC, and Potawatomi County Development Corporation, PCDC. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor? That ends the public hearing. It was the council's pleasure.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Is there discussion?
I just want to say briefly that when this came to us originally in March to approve the initial application, I was hopeful that we would see something sensitive to the historic nature of that block, and I remain hopeful of that. I know the plans are still in flux. They're up against a pretty impossible deadline. I think I've seen two of the alternatives, not the one that's been put forward by the applicant. The other one, I think, I'd like them to go back and just take another look at the applicable regulations. I think they're respectfully operating under a misunderstanding. Take for example, Jocelyn Art Museum, that addition. I don't know whether it got federal money, but it makes a good example for this purpose. The new addition is far more modern. It's kind of what I'd call a box compared to the old, with a glass breezeway that connects it. You're connecting something new to an existing, and that word's very important, historic building, so the regulations don't allow you to try to get it too close, because today's building methods will never be able to fully replicate that at any cost anybody can afford. That, and if you ever want to quote-unquote "correct" the building by taking the addition off, it's really easy to do. In this case, there is no building on that grassy lot, so you know, I'd ask the applicant to go back and take a look at the developers' other proposals that were far more in keeping with the historic side of things. Finally, I just want to say, my biggest concern with the project isn't so much what I think, but as part of that process, sometimes government regulations get thrown around, one of them under the applicable laws called Section 106. And under that law, that was passed in 1966 by the Federal Congress and signed by the President, started national historic districts. And one of the requirements, 106, says local governments and local folks have a right to intervene and have comments, have public input throughout the whole process. I've spoken about this in other projects. I just don't think here enough effort was made about that. I think, no, make no mistake, I think it will, the vote will go through tonight, but to express my displeasure and my great hope that people will take into account the concerns of other people, have meetings, for example, that aren't during the day when most folks are at work, that are announced in broader ways so that people know about them, not just put in the paper the day before. And no offense to the paper, but for the few folks who get it compared to, there's a lot of people who don't in this day and age. It's not just us locally, but there's a lot more people getting their news online. I think we really need to reach out and get true public input, which is a requirement under that law, and I just respectfully don't think that was done here. So I'd encourage folks, regardless of what I think of this particular proposal, as it moves forward, you have an absolute right to be a part of that process, because when things are built in our community with nearly a million dollars of your tax money, it ought not to just get put through without your say. And so I regretfully and with great hope, I have to vote against it.
Any other discussion by the council?
Well, I concur a little bit with Nate in that the internet just lets you be a little bit dangerous, I guess, in that I've never heard of Section 106 until last Thursday, and so I go on the internet and try and look, and it talks about, does it affect a historic building? And I think it's a pretty hard argument, it's across the street from the historic district, that it has an effect on the historic district, but it certainly has an effect on the ambiance of the neighborhood when you... And I'm being cautious here, but I've read the PCDC guidelines, and you don't follow the PCDC development guidelines. And you're not intentionally not following that for any other reason other than it's community development block grant money, and those who are experts say that we can't make it look like an older building, but as Nate said, I'd encourage you to try and soften its diverse difference between the surrounding.
And then I guess my question, we went pretty fast. I don't know if you had intended to stand up and show the camera, the artist's rendering, and you said this afternoon that you were going to be doing some changes, but can I ask them to elaborate on some of the changes that they're talking about, or is the time for that done?
Well, I mean, obviously, the public hearing is over. If you have them for questions, Dick, I'm...
Can you ask questions?
Yeah, you can ask questions, and I'm not...
Well, I guess the...
Yeah, you have... Go ahead.
I guess the question would be, what would you, if you're, if you can, tell us tonight that will help with some of the concerns that you're hearing here? And I know it's not on the boards that you have, but I don't even know if the public has seen those boards or not. If that's appropriate, I don't want to be out of line, but...
You are.
Question. I am? You are out of order.
Good evening. Julie Stavnek, 142 West Broadway, Suite 140. To your point, we can show the renderings.
Right there.
Okay.
That's one view. That is the 100-block view. You know, as we said, I'm going to own this at the end of the day, and I also own an asset across the street, so good urban design is critical to me as well. We are in the process. I actually, what would probably help us, because this is just the early schematics, would be more specifics, because we have had under other renderings that were perhaps more modern. I'm not sure. There's multiple examples around our community that have corrugated metal, which my dad used on old farm buildings, and I hated back in the day, so that's never been an architecture feature that I like, and I don't want to see that on the 100-block, and we have had iterations of that. So if someone can get really a little more specific with some advice on what they'd like to see, that would be helpful, so that then we could try to incorporate that into the design, or at least consider it. Because we did receive the $2.4 million, or we're trying to receive the $2.4 million from the state, they are requiring the 106 review because of those funds, so they will be reviewing and giving their input. To your point, Matt, that is absolutely true. This actual building is not part of the historic district, but we clearly want to be sensitive to its surroundings and have done some modifications to do that, which we increased the height of the parapet. We did reduce the metal, because I believe that wasn't part of the guidelines for the 100-block, because there's no other corrugated metal on the block, so we tried to reduce some of the things that we originally had had. With that being said, again, we have to be careful. Another iteration of ours had tons more brick that we really don't think is going to be in our budget, so... But we definitely are open-minded as far as, we want the best thing to come out of this as well. For, one, because I'm going to own it for a long time. Two, again, I like good urban design, and I want to attract not only commercial tenants, but my residents to stay as well, so...
Well, and I'm not an architect, but you ask. Old brick, or brick that looks old, wood frame windows, which maybe are too expensive, arched windows, which maybe are too expensive, but...
I think you raise a good point. You know, this is a computer rendering, and at that, it's, you know, we're fairly early in the process, but when you talk about, you know, old-looking brick, that's a detail level that we get to, you know, at some point down the road, and that's something that, you know, these are crisp, clean renderings. That softness of that brick, or the wood of the windows, doesn't come through in images like this. So, you know, specifically, we've talked about raising parapets and, you know, doing some things, you know, get things to move up and down, but those are more formal things. I think a lot of the historic character that, you know, we all see in downtowns really comes in at the detail level, you know, and that's something that, like I said, is just totally in development at this point. But, you know, that's where we land. I mean, as an architecture firm, you know, it's downtown. You want to maintain that and make it great, and that's the goal here.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion by the council? We have a motion, floor, and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of Resolution 13-217, authorizing the mayor to execute a communication system license between the City of Council Bluffs and Quest Corporation, Century Link, QC. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor? That ends the public hearing. It was the council's pleasure.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of Resolution 13-218, authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed and any documents necessary to transfer interest in city property located at 414 Jewel Road. Is that correct?
Five, four, one, five.
Four, one...
One, five.
Four, one, one, five. We want to make sure we have the right address. Jewel Road. Is proof of publication on file? The correct file?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor? That ends the public hearing. It was the council's pleasure.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised as a matter of Resolution 13-219, approving the plan, specification form of contract, and cost estimate for the River Road Storm Outfall Repair Project, FY12-11C. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests as a matter of people speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor? That ends the public hearing. It was the council's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Which one are we on?
Round eight.
Eight.
Second for discussion.
Is that the one we're supposed to?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was...
Or reject in bids.
No.
No.
No, that's the seven.
Seven G.
No, they've got them flipped or...
Okay. Any discussion?
Oh, you're right. That's...
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is on second reading. Ordinance 6192, amending Chapter 13.01 Uniform Administrative Code by amending Section 13.01.0204.4, consistency of Board of Appeals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Motion to weigh third? Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ordinance passes the law.
Ordinance is on third reading. Ordinance 6188, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.070 by changing the district designation of lots 4 through 7, Block 39, Beer subdivision, from I-1 Light Industrial to R-2 Two-Family Residential, as set forth and defined in Chapters 15.20 and 15.09.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ordinance passes the law.
Ordinance 6189 revised, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.070 by rezoning property legally described as part of the southeast quarter of Section 37444 from PC Planned Commercial to I-2 General Industrial District, adjacent to 2520 and 2608 South 24th Street, Council Bluffs, Iowa. Property as set forth and defined in Chapters 15.18 and 15.21.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment, adding Section 2 conditions that would state, "The rezoning of the property is subject to the applicant placing $50,000 in escrow for the purpose of developing and implementing a landscape plan along Mid-American Drive. The applicant will work with the city in coming up with a suitable plan. The escrow agreement shall grant to the city the right to draw money from the escrow for the implementation of the plan should applicant fail to have the landscaping complete within 12 months of the passage of this ordinance. This rezoning shall continue to be conditioned upon the applicant and/or its assigns continued maintenance of the landscaping improvements until such a time that the City of Council Bluffs by resolution release some of this obligation. This condition has been agreed to by the applicant in writing, is authorized by Section 414.5 of the Iowa Code, and is imposed to satisfy the public needs which are directly caused by the requested change."
Second. Discussion on the amendment. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Now the ordinance says amended. Any other discussion?
I just think the mayor and his staff and Councilmember White deserve a great deal of credit. I know some folks had concerns. I had some concerns about the original proposal. I think the applicant really went above and beyond. We keep saying applicant, but I think they deserve credit, so I'll say their names, Sat Brothers. I really think they stepped up, being a good corporate citizen, and again, the mayor and his staff and Councilmember White really brokered a wonderful deal that's good for the people of Council Bluffs and their entertainment district, beautifying the area, South 24th Street, and allowing Sat Brothers to continue to do the work and employ in the people they do, and I commend them for it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ordinance passes the law.
Ordinance 6191 revised, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.070 by rezoning that part of the northeast quarter of Section 14 and the southeast quarter of Section 11 Township 74 North Range 44, west of the 5th PM, Potawatomi County, from R-1 Single Family Residential District to R-3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District, as set forth and defined in Chapters 15.08B and 15.10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ordinance passes the law.
Resolutions. Resolution 13-220, authorizing the mayor to execute a community development block grant multi-family unit production rental disaster recovery fund contract with 125 West Broadway LLC... LLC and the Potawatomi County Development Corporation, providing CDBG funds for the construction of the new three-story mixed-use structure at 125 West Broadway.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? And my only discussion, Sharon, can you vote on this? You abstain on...
No, I abstained on Marketplace.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Thank you. I could ask...
Just wanted to make sure you're legal. Your attorney's not watching.
Any discussion by the council? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Resolution 13-221, authorizing a joint application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority by the Council Bluffs Enterprise Zone Commission and 125 West Broadway LLC for enterprise zone benefits.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Resolution 13-222, authorizing the acquisition of the property located at 4047 Avenue G for storm water and flood control.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Resolution 13-223, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement for the demolition of 411 Spencer Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Resolution 13-224, authorizing the acquisition of the property at 20 North First Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Resolution 13-226, granting the preliminary subdivision plan approval for a 23-lot residential subdivision to be known as Forest Glen Subdivision Phase 5.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Resolution 13-227, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Erican Construction, Inc., for the North 21st Street Storm Water Pump Station.
Motion to reject all bids.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Applications for permits and cancellations A through C.
Motion to approve.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.[1710.03]